Good evening. This is the city council meeting of March 2nd, 2015. If you'd stand with me for the pledge of allegiance, please.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Thank you. I'm going to call upon the clerk for the roll call, please.
Councilmember Althoff?
Here.
Councilmember Ellison?
Here.
Councilmember Hall?
Here.
Councilmember Mayor?
Here.
And Mayor Hages?
Here. Thank you. Second item is the agenda. Any additions or corrections there?
I move that we approve the agenda as presented.
I'll second.
I move to second to accept the agenda as presented to us. All in favor?
Yes.
Any opposed? Okay, thank you. The minutes of our previous meetings, there was a regular council meeting on February 17th, and we'll address that one first. Any corrections to those minutes?
I move that we approve the minutes of the February 17th regular meeting as presented.
I will second.
Okay, thank you. We have a motion in a second to accept the minutes of the February 17th regular meeting. For this, maybe roll call.
Councilmember Althoff?
Yes.
Councilmember Ellison?
Yes.
Councilmember Hall?
Yes.
Councilmember Mayor?
Yes.
And Mayor Hages?
Yes. Thank you. And the work session that we had on February 23rd, those are in the record also. Any changes there?
I will move for approval of the work session minutes of February 23rd.
No, second.
I move to second to approve the work session minutes. This is a roll call also.
Councilmember Althoff?
Yes.
Councilmember Ellison?
Yes.
Councilmember Hall?
Yes.
Councilmember Mayor?
Yes.
And Mayor Hages?
Yes. Thank you. Approval of the accounts payable, item number four. Bills. Are there any questions?
I move that we approve the accounts payable as presented.
I will second.
I move to second to adopt your accounts payable. Kind of again, a roll call, please.
Councilmember Althoff?
Yes.
Councilmember Ellison?
Yes.
Councilmember Hall?
Yes.
Councilmember Mayor?
Yes.
And Mayor Hages?
Yes. Thank you. Item five, citizens' comments for any of the items that do not appear on the agenda, so if any citizen would like to address the council, this would be the time to do so. We ask that you keep your comments to about five minutes.
Perry Beecham, I reside at 924 Riverside Drive. Just two kind of public announcements. One is Gildes Latfest this Saturday, March 7th, at Grand Lute. Great comedian there. Would encourage the citizens of Lowell to show their support for the Lowell Gildes Club by attending that event. And tickets can be purchased at Spring Grove Variety. Secondly, as chairman of the parks, I just want to say thank you to Dan, Scott Fosberg, and the DPW for the ice skating rink. It's been, weather's been great for that. It's been a great success. And also want to thank the lacrosse club. They've also been maintaining the ice rink on a daily basis, and the DPW has, you know, provided equipment. This week, I saw that they plowed the, pushed the snow back, which makes it easier for lacrosse people. Again, I just want to thank the DPW garage for their assistance with that. Thank you.
Thank you very much. Anyone else care to address the council? Saying none, then we'll move on to home business. Item number six, we've got a strategic goals report. Mr. Hall.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor and councilmembers. Item building on strategic goals, item is item number 14, downtown development plan. The final report has been presented to the DDA. We're still working at getting the, trying to copy around, it's a very big file. So we're still, we're kind of trying to get that around and get it on the website as well as the stage plan. But we'll get a copy out to you as well. I don't think you have hard copies of these. And then, on any council projects, live disposal, if there's consensus from the council, I'd like to remove that item from the report. There, you know, sent a letter to the DEQ, we received no response. We consider the matter closed. And I think that's where we're at.
I have a question on that. You did send us a little memo. Are we going to try to recoup some of our, did, have we made a final payment on that? Are we still pulling back money?
We are, we are not going to make a final payment, and we are going to write a letter indicating that we're not going to make a final payment, and that we have some additional expenses, and that we expect to be paid, I don't know, the kid, um, money for those final expenses. And then, at that point, we would have to make a decision, and I can bring that back to you if you want. Above whether or not we pursue that, we believe in being that.
Is, is that above and beyond the 75,000? Or whatever we held accurate?
Um, we held, I'm just using rough numbers, okay? But we withheld about, I want to say about 45. Seems like the total contract was about 90. Again, I can give more detail for you.
But they didn't, they didn't have to put up a performance bond or anything?
Um, they did, and we talked about whether or not we would exercise a performance bond, and they don't have any assets. And so, they could just liquidate the company and be done. It really is more an administrative company than it is a, um, a company that has assets.
So, so basically, we have about $40,000 that we withheld?
Yes.
And our expenses are above and beyond that, or?
Yes, we have additional expenses with the engineering, with the interior.
I would, I would just make the recommendation that we keep it until it's finished.
Yeah, maybe another month. Or file a report.
Until it's, we know that it's done, and it can't come back.
Yeah, and if you'd like, I can maybe summarize the memo to you, the additional expenses, exactly what they are, and those kinds of things, either include in this report, or just a very special memo to you. And, because we may be at a decision point where, it's kind of like the airport?
Yeah.
Where, you know, are we going to, are we going to pursue this or that? And part of that depends on what our additional expenses were. So, maybe I need to pull those facts together and summarize those, and I can, depending on what you say or not, that's what you mean.
Yeah, it's not a quote.
For a while. All right. Anything else? I'm assuming no. Moving on to new business?
No, there is none. There is, I'm recording notes, so nothing else to report. He liked that as well.
I didn't want to interrupt. Moving on to new business, item A, resolution for approving the authorization, authorization of, yeah, agreement with Williams here, so, airport.
Airport. Um, our new airport manager, Casey Brown, has done a, I took a marvelous job of working with Dan Williams. Dan Williams is the fixed base operator at the airport. And in order to be the fixed base operator, to provide certain services to the city, and then as compensation for those services, we pay him partly, and we allow him to use a couple of city buildings. And so, Casey's worked this agreement out with him, has taken it to the airport board. The airport board has recommended him, and so now it's before the council for consideration, and ultimately approved, if you so choose.
Question concerning, a lot of paperwork on this one.
Yeah, I am on the airport, and we did start this when Jim was still the manager.
He did.
And, and then, but Casey really brought my, because we kept table on it because it wasn't right, and Casey did bring a lot to the board, so I do recommend that we...
That's a motion.
I make a motion. After speaking with Dan Williams, myself...
We need a second before we can have any further discussions.
I will second.
All right, no.
After speaking with Dan Williams, he feels real comfortable with it, he's happy with Casey. Those should be good over there.
Okay, well. I move in second then to adopt this resolution, four, four dash 15. For this, the roll call, please.
Councilmember Althoff?
Yes.
Councilmember Ellison?
Yes.
Councilmember Hall?
Yes.
Councilmember Mayor?
Yes.
And Mayor Hages?
Yes, thank you. Item B, a public hearing on the community development block grants, and before we open up the public hearing, Mr. Hall, if you could give us a little background there.
Certainly, we participate with Kent County, the county program, and through that program, we receive community development block grant, which comes through HUD, it's federal block grant. And that comes through Kent County, and then, there's a certain amount that's appropriated out to the municipalities, and our total is about 30,000 dollars. We submit to Kent County grants, or actually, applications, so that we can show them that we're using the dollars, and we like to use the dollars in a way that is acceptable to HUD. They review those applications, and then ultimately approve the dollars. Our breakdown has been roughly $3,000 for North Kent Transit, and about $27,000 for other projects. Last year, we submitted for a pathway project, which would have been extending the Ridge View sidewalk, where we did the Ridge View trails, and the Ridge View sidewalk. And we, at the time, were thinking about doing down street, but we weren't sure whether or not the fix that we wanted to do on down was going to qualify for CBGT funding. We've been able to work through the process, and work with Kent County to determine that we can do that project, that down street project, and so, what we're doing here is asking you to reallocate those funds to the down street project.
Okay. All right. And with that, we'll open up the public hearing, so if anyone would like to address the council concerning these matters of the community development block grants, please step up to the podium and state your name. Seeing no big rush. We'll close the public hearing, and council comments for the community development block grants.
I move that we adopt resolution five dash 15.
Okay, and I would, I would actually, did we have a comment, or do we have to?
You can't, yes.
Before we do that?
Oh, yes, we need a second. Mary, you need a second. Well, I guess, I suppose, was made, so very quickly. Do we have a second?
I'll second.
Okay, now.
What I was, what I was wondering is, is what did we decide to do about the, the $3,000 that we...
Transitioned?
For the transit?
Oh, network, yeah.
Yeah. Were we...
And it's not part of this, is it?
No, it's, the $3,000 is current through June from CBGT, and then, I am planning on including in the budget for next year that I present to you in a month or so, $3,000 again, for us to fund that, our general fund during the transition. And then, what I'd like to do is have a discussion with Brown, see whether or not Brown is interested in perhaps picking up that transportation program. I was able to get you and to ask if you did your workshop, went to the ridership, I think this year, so far, we had four riders, four total of 89 rides. We've had as many as seven, eight riders in years past for, I'm trying to recall it off the top of my head, which is 10 years, but maybe less than 200 total rides in the last couple of years.
Good, any others?
Yeah, I'm good.
Okay, we have a motion in a second, and for, this is the resolution, uh, five dash 15, and so, roll call, please.
Councilmember Althoff?
Yes.
Councilmember Ellison?
Yes.
Councilmember Hall?
Yes.
Councilmember Mayor?
Yes.
And Mayor Hages?
Yes.
Thank you. Item C, wastewater flow monitoring.
Brian Villon is here, friend of New Hall, and while he's making his way up to the podium, just to sort of summarize for you, we're basically looking at gathering data that will assist in the design of the lift station. And as a part of doing that, we're trying to be strategic about the data gathering that maybe will give us some insight into some of my issues as well.
Thank you very much. I'll try to be brief, but again, if there's any questions, please let me know. There's a little bit of a history with flow monitoring for the city. I mean, we've been looking at some information on Marcus Fordus back from 1974, and issues been around, and I learned some study work done back then. The old Williamson Works did that. It was interesting, a lot of the data they had, it took a certain angle and approach to addressing inflow and infiltration, which is basically water coming into the wastewater system that's not generated by the users. So whether it's groundwater or rainwater that's getting into the system. The reason that's a concern really is, has to deal with what kind of capacity do you build into the system? How big do you make the pipe? So it affects your infrastructure, your cost there, also affects the treatment costs, of course, the size of the plant, and what kinds of processes you have to do, how much you have to pump, the chemicals that you use, and all that processes involved in it. There was another, another study done in 2010 recently, that took again another angle at it, and came to some different conclusions, and I know there was some research done, and staff worked very hard on trying to track where some of those flows are coming from. That particular report had some difficulties with the flow monitors, because they were put a little close to the Water Street Pump Station, and so, there was some backwater problems, and I know those meters had to be moved a few times, which caused a little bit of erroneous data, and so, didn't give us really good, hard data. So we thought, okay, before we look at actually building a whole pump station there at the wastewater plant to replace the Water Street Station, it makes sense to have a really good, solid basis of design for that, rather than guessing and thinking, oh, maybe we're right or not, there's just too much at stake that we think to do that. So, we've sat with Dan and Mark, Mark Mountain, Mark Howe, and looked at the entire system, and again, broken the system up into big chunks, meaning the east side of the city, the central portion just west of the river, and the far western district, and then within that, some other breakdowns to separate, further subdivide those districts, so we can really hone in on where exactly flows are coming from, and what the magnitude of those are. I think part of the goal of this, that the flow monitoring is not only to determine what those peak flows are, but also look at some of the base flows, and to see if we can sort out and maybe find some of the particular areas to focus on to eliminate some of that extra inflow, and knock those flows down that are coming into the plant, maybe help save things in the system overall. The nice part about the flow monitoring system that we're proposing now is that all that work is really eligible under your future SAW grant that you get from the state that hasn't been awarded yet, but you guys are in the line to have that awarded in October of 2016. Correct. So, once that becomes active, any cost, any eligible cost you've incurred up to that point are eligible for reimbursement. Matter of fact, the SAW grant eligibility goes all the way back to January 2 of 2013. So, so any of those eligible costs are retroactively reimbursable. So, the day you have the SAW grant awarded is the day we can apply for reimbursement for all this stuff. So, this proposed work is again, as I mentioned, 90% covered under that grant as well, so...
Just for public information, maybe just one, the SAW grant, that's happened before.
Storm and wastewater grant. It's really, it's a grant programmed by the state of Michigan to prepare in-depth asset management plans, which is really a, a way to look at both the sewer system and the storm sewer system, to determine its condition, and look at risks, and in essence, a way to figure out where you have the worst problems, and which one should be a priority to address. That's really the big, big picture.
I have a question. Because we did spend money trying to get this monitored before, and I know there were lots of issues. Can you maybe explain what makes you confident that your attempt at getting this would be more effective?
Yep, and we've talked with Dan and with Mark, and looked at the system, and I think for the lower reaches where we're close to the Water Street Pump Station, we're far enough back that we have locations that shouldn't be affected by the backwater that's existing in the system there. In addition, there's a few more monitors that we had planned at this one that weren't in the other one. And I think the other real big advantage is that, as odd as it sounds, even the 1974 study, because of the approach that they took, and some of the data that they collected, led us to think about a few other things that then weren't addressed the same way in the 2010 study. So I think the combination of, in essence, standing on the shoulders of those other two studies, really gives us a good insight into some other things to explore that really hadn't been yet. And I guess as an example, that's all right to elaborate, but what it, what it means is, a lot of times when engineers are looking at flows, we have a tendency to look at average flows, and, and what we're seeing is there's some real interesting relationships between minimum flows, or things that you might experience during the middle of the night, or late in the season, August, when it's really dry, versus different kinds of flows that we're seeing after either rain events, or when the flat river is up. And I think our approach is to look at those minimums and maximums instead of just averages. And I think those two, minimums and maximums, tell us a different story than just the averages do. I think we'll be able to get more out of that than the other studies had. Sorry, that's a little engineering stuff.
No, no, that's fine, thanks. I just wanted to, you know, have you explain why your, your study would be different and hopefully more effective.
It's important to know why you want to, and we were talking about that in the office this morning, of, you know, why, why would you want to spend money when you've already spent good money? And, and the truth of it is, as I said, you spend good money because you got some good results from the last two studies, but I think we're going to then stand on those shoulders and take a little bit of a different angle, and look at some different information that I think will, will get us much further down the road.
As long as we keep trying, you know, trying to get to the bottom end, who knows? But thank you for your explanation.
You're welcome.
Any other questions or discussion?
I move that we authorize the city manager to proceed with the proposed flow monitor, monitoring and lift station basis of design project.
I will second.
I've moved in seconded to adopt the motion to the city manager pursue the work. Roll call, please.
Councilmember Althoff?
Yes.
Councilmember Ellison?
Yes.
Councilmember Hall?
Yes.
Councilmember Mayor?
Yes.
And Mayor Hages?
Yes. Thank you. Item D is wastewater operation analysis.
Well, maybe I'll start, and I wanted Brian, I'm ready to have a look in on this. We had some discussion at a workshop last, actually last year, and you had wanted me to explore whether or not it would be more cost-effective for us to run our wastewater treatment plant in-house, or whether or not we should continue to contract it out. Our contract with United Water to run our wastewater plant is expiring at the end of June. We have been contracting with some form of United Water since about 1989, I think I've included some of that information in here. That was, that was in the face of, facing a consent decree from a federal district court, when we were alleged to, by the EPA, to have violated conditions of our MPTES So, I started looking at what other systems were paying staff, but it was really difficult for me to know, or make a comparison on a contract, a contract basis, and during our discussion at the workshop, you had indicated that perhaps I could get a third party to take and look at it for me. And so, that's what we've done. Brian's taken a little bit of a different approach to it, which seems to be a valid approach, and he can present his findings to you, and I will listen to that as well. So, Brian.
Oh, thank you, Ian, I appreciate it. In looking at this information, and trying to figure out what, what makes sense from a cost perspective, I guess really there were two questions that were asked. One is, how, how are you doing as a community in cost comparison? And then the other is, does it make sense to do the work with in-house staff or contract? And I guess the first one is the easier one to answer, honestly. We went and looked at quite a few different communities that have similar plant tiers, meaning they use a similar process in order to try to get some apples-to-apples comparison. We called 10 different communities, of which we received callback from eight of them, and then, as you can see, based on the table, we really only received good information from three of them. Part of the problem, and we can talk a little bit more about this later, but a couple of the communities were in transition of trying to find operators, and so, they didn't have people who were really knowledgeable in the information that we were looking for to give it to us. So it's interesting to see that, that's one of the things that we've been noticing is a general industry trend, is that operator, fewer and fewer certified operators in the state, and they're getting harder and harder to come by. So, so that'll be one of the considerations we talk about shortly. As it relates to cost, really you have, over the, there's a lot of different ways people put together contracts for their wastewater plants, but generally, you will see that you have, as you guys know, a base labor fees that you pay for, it's staffing costs. There is some operations and maintenance costs, meaning whether it's electricity, or pumps, if there's natural gas, all those utilities, phone, telecommunications, all those things can play into that as well. And it varies by community, whether the, that's included in a contract, if it's contracted work, or sometimes even if it is contracted, those bills are paid directly by the municipality. So, there's a variety in the way those things are handled. And I also included, as you know, there's a line for CIP, your capital improvement plan payments. So, some contracts, and yours is one of them, that includes a certain allowance that's a requirement for capital improvement on the plant, whether it's purchasing of new pumps or whatever, and you guys have that amount in your contract that they're required to spend each year as a minimum for, for maintenance operations. And then there's also the debt payments sometimes that are included in those costs as well, and not all communities roll that into their contract. So, in order to try to make an apples-to-apples comparison, I tried to hopefully make that table clear where we looked at what a real, true net annual operating cost is. And so, for instance, for Clinton, Village of Clinton, the way that was needed to work, is we took the labor plus their O and M, which was the standard, and then I subtracted their capital improvement costs, because they, for instance, required that 20, the local $22,000 a year in expenditures, where you guys have 12. So, again, that's where we're trying to separate out things that would skew the results a little bit. And so, it also indicated how we came up with the Lowell net annual cost. Then, if you simply look at net annual cost, it's really hard to gain an understanding of, you know, how, what's the comparison, is one more expensive than the other? So then, we really look at that net annual cost per gallon, or per million gallons treated. And what we noticed, and I can explain this in another term, but the idea is that there is a, in essence, an economy of scale. The larger the plant gets, the less the cost per gallon. So, the analogy is, if you drive to the store to get a gallon of milk, and you account for all your costs, including your gas and your time, that one gallon of milk is expensive. But if you go and get a whole grocery cart full of things, that cost per item drops because there's a certain base cost to get to the store. It's kind of the same way. So there's an economy of scale that's realized with wastewater treatment plants, and so you have this natural curve. And really, when you look at your cost compared to the three other cities that gave us data, you really fall right on that, that natural curve of economies of scale. So, you know, your cost per gallon is much less than, say, Village of Clinton, but you're a little bit higher than the City of Milan, and that relates directly to that average daily flow number at the top of the table. So hopefully, that gives you an idea of your, your general cost as it relates to scale. And so, in our opinion, based on what we've seen on only this data, but on other plants, that you guys really fall in, in the right range for, for annual costs. The next rule of discussion point, and it was a question of whether to self-staff or contract out. And I think there's quite a few points that we made as part of that memo. I think there's things that you need to consider, for instance, self-staffing, you're completely responsible on your own for finding an operator, which is getting more and more difficult, especially for smaller to medium-sized municipalities, they're having a real hard time getting operators sometimes because of the larger operator, or larger municipalities and treatment plants are, are paying more for their stuff. And they can, because, again, their cost per gallon is a little lower, so overall, the labor costs for them are a smaller part of their operation. So they have more flexibility with salaries and benefits. The other thing is, and, you know, we, we work with the Village of Sparta. Now, they've had some difficulties with, with their operators, and they've come under some pretty significant scrutiny from DEQ for their, their discharges. And they've, since then... And they've, since then, done a lot of rearranging of staff and have relieved a few people and have now been working with Muskegon County wastewater plant folks the last, oh, about a year now to try to get their plant back in correct operations. The village is also going through the decision of should they stick with and continue to work with Muskegon or contract it out. So they're going through that process as well, but they're coming to the conclusion that they don't want to self-staff now. They've had some issues doing that, and they're going to try the other side for a while. And I think they're also recognizing how difficult it is to keep certified operators. Where if you contract, that becomes the responsibility of your contracted entity. So there are some pluses and minuses to self-staffing or doing a contract entity. The other thing that's interesting too with a contracted entity is, you know, they're in a group of operators that are in, in essence, their firm. And so they have a lot of resources as well directly, not just only, not only through associations that all the wastewater plant operators do, but also directly through those in their company. Typically, they'll have access to other experts. There's people who are better at certain biology problems than others. And so there are some resources, I think, that tend to be used a little more with a contract entity than with self-staff because if you're self-staffed, often those staff have to then reach outside the community to their associations or other colleagues to try to find answers for things. And that, not that they're so reluctant to do so, but it just, there's a tendency to not do so. So there's, again, as I mentioned, a few more resources on the contract side. But there is then that other side that if you're with a contracted entity, they are in a business. And so they do need to make a reasonable amount of money in the contract. And they do that through trying to gain efficiencies and how they staff and things like that, but that's the trade-off. One other kind of not-so-hard cost that's interesting too is that if you self-staff, you do have to administer for that staff. So thinking that it's accounting time and it's Mark's time and, you know, it's Dan's time. If that's staff, you are dealing with them, and that means whenever your other staff are dealing with wastewater plant staff, they're not doing something else because you can't do two things at the same time. So that means that there's other things in the community that they might not be able to get to if they're dealing with that administrative piece of it. It's just another factor, and it's really up to you guys to decide how significant you think those factors are as you decide what makes sense for you. Any questions about that information? I know it's kind of a machine gun bunch of information.
I think another piece of clarity too that we, I've been around a while, and I remember prior to contracting out that our fines with the DEQ was $10,000 per day.
They can be up to $25,000 a day, yes.
And in a contract situation, the provider would cover the fees?
Well, look, they are, in essence, they're the first in line. You have a contractual relationship with them. So you as the permit holder still are in line as the fine you are. If there's a fine, it's against you. However, if you have a contract with an entity, they come on legal board with you with that. And as the ones responsible for operating the plant, you can legally tag them with that then, yes.
So should something go wrong?
Correct.
A little more coverage?
Yep, a lot more coverage there. I mean, you're first in line, but you can stick them in front of you. That's all that works, yep.
When you're looking at those dollars per day, how much?
Correct. And it holds them accountable. I mean, that's the other part about it is they have a very significant incentive to make sure that they meet those permit requirements.
What's the information I was looking for?
I was, I was looking for that too, but we do have the same, another facility in town that falls underneath the same government body that's an award-winning plant with our own employees that are caught cross-trained and working on the departments. And to my knowledge, we've never had a fine at the water treatment plant. I don't really even know if we had a fine back then. It doesn't, didn't really say if we paid a fine. We just could have paid a fine. But we're dealing with a DEQ right now with a line disposal. And we could be fined or could have been fined. So, and Mark said to deal with that. All I'm saying is it just, I think we just need to look a little more. A little bit here, a little bit there. But I'm just one person.
I think we should look a little bit more above. I mean, I heard you put a little more research into it. See if we can have any way to save our labor rates, especially not saying that we're paying too much or nothing like that right now. If there's a way to save, it's a way to save. I know there's other options available, other subcontractors available. See what their bid would be. If it's a subcontractor way to go, it should go up for bid.
Were any of the utilities that you did, were they ran by their own utilities or did you just find ones that were ran?
No, they were actually, let me look here. I think, I believe the Village of Clinton was self-staffed. And the City of Richmond was self-staffed, and Milan was contracted. One thing to consider, and I know this, in business, as you guys know, anytime you have an employee, you have both direct costs, which is their hourly cost. You also then have those indirect costs. So you have all the extra taxes and benefits and all those things that you pay for. But you also, and this is the hardest part, I think, on the governmental side, is there needs to be a recognition too that all your staff, whether you actually assign your true overhead costs that way or not, citizens, for instance, still pay for the city hall. They still pay for municipal buildings and the light and the water that goes into it. And theoretically, all of those costs should also be divvied up among employees as a per-employee cost. And that's, so when you, all I do is caution you, when you look at direct costs such as labor and what those things cost, that typically municipal entities will look at labor cost times a multiplier of sometimes 1.8 to 2. And when you look at industries as a whole, private industry, they factor in all their costs, which includes the lights, the power, the buildings, and all those things that it takes for employees, administrative staff, all those things that go to support. And on an industry-wide average, you end up running anywhere between 2.8 to 3.2 as a multiplier times an hourly rate. So that's just something to consider, that as you look at costs, there's a lot of times, from a municipal perspective, it's easy to say, oh, our cost per staff is lower. But when you really factor in all the things it takes to support those employees, you need to do an apples-to-apples comparison on it. So just as a note of caution. It's easy to say our people are cheaper, but it's also easy to forget some of the costs that go along with supporting.
I'm like, I know Mark Munt spoke to us one time, and he was actually trying to recruit young people to get into this field because it's really difficult to find qualified people. If we have to try to find somebody, that's going to be a lot of administrative time. I see that our costs are in line. We're getting good service. There's no complaints. You know, do we really want to bite that off at this time? It just doesn't seem very cost-effective in time, not just dollars, but in the time it would take to try to find somebody. Set up this whole, for what? Would we be saving that much money? And it doesn't seem to be that we would. So I'm in favor, or we talked about it, but I think we're doing well right now where we're at. I think United Water's doing a good job, and I appreciate that. The fact that, you know, we would be able to renew a contract with them. It's not easy finding someone that qualified.
Just that. Number one, Mark and his wife are residents here in town. They're part of, a big part of the community. They're involved in more than one organization that I know about. I don't recall any complaints that we've had of United Water. I don't know who managed the plant in the early days, but there were days that the stench down there was incredibly bad. And it was particularly noticeable on Friday nights when the football game was going. We haven't had that in years. And I've toured the plant. I know the kind of maintenance procedures that they put in place. And I think they have the incentive to try to keep the costs lower because they belong to a larger organization. I think any new developments are going to be forefront with the organization versus our individuals. So I'm very much in favor of having the city manager negotiate a new contract with them.
My comment would be that, well, I can't really add much more, but I would be in agreement with both Sharon and Jim. And I asked my question. I was most concerned about fines and how that's governed and so forth because that's where we're most exposed. And I do remember negotiating out of that with the DEQ and so forth. And it was most lucky to get out as we did. That's my feelings. Any other comments?
Yes, I do have a comment. Because we asked for a comparison of in-house and contracting, I agree that, and I'll agree, that we probably shouldn't contract it out at this time. But I do want to make the comment that this is a very, very expensive contract. And it hasn't went out to, and it needs to go up to bid. It's in our charter that it has to go up to bid. And it needs to go up to bid. I mean, sure, they've been doing a good job. There's a lot of other companies out there. We have the Light and Power Board. Through their, through their agreement with another company, has hired another company that works for the City of Lowell in a way because it's infrastructure. They do the same thing. And in all regards to the citizens of Lowell, and not just the citizens of Lowell, the townships because we actually are negotiating for the townships too when we do this. I think that it should be put up for bid.
Any other comments?
I believe that we negotiate the new agreement with United Water.
I think Mr. Munt, did you have something to add?
I appreciate Bruce's comments, and I was invited to speak, I thought. So if you don't mind, I'd like to share a few comments with you. I've got a few. I'm here for 26 years almost. It's been 10 years since we signed a new agreement. So bear with me. This should only take about an hour. There's a lot of good news to tell. Some of this you just heard. Some of it I would put a different spin on perhaps or more clarity. So bear with me. I've got a couple pages. Like I said, it's been 26 years. So originally, the contract is with WW Operations Services. Today, you know this is United Water. Tomorrow, they'll come out and say something else. You talked about why you did develop the contract. We talked about the compliance issues with the old plant. The city was also not in compliance with the industrial pretreatment program. Prior to my arrival, when I came, I worked with Dick Wint, developed the industrial pretreatment program. At that time, we began collecting surcharges from the industries, which is amounted to over several hundred thousand dollars over the years that previously was going uncollected by the city staff. The city had just spent four and a half million dollars to build the plant, and they wanted to protect that asset. And they thought contract operations was the way to do that. They tried hiring their own superintendent at that time. And all that did was get them in even deeper with regulators because it didn't work out. It worked out very poorly. And so the city really had a black eye with both the state and the EPA. And I got to come in and smooth all of that out. So there was a lot of good reasons, and history has shown that it was the right thing to do. It was a partnership that we worked into, and it's been a very successful partnership for almost 26 years. So some of this you've heard, some of you haven't. Some of this is, hopefully you know. Hopefully you know all of it, but I'm going to guess that you don't. Some of it you may have forgotten, so I'm going to go over a few points. United Water is one of the top two contract operations companies in the United States. We're not small. We guarantee total compliance with the NPDS permit. If we do something wrong and there's a violation and there are fines, we pay those fines. It's as simple as that. We're not standing in front of you as an artillery barrier. If we're responsible, we pay. It's in black and white. It's very simple. Using the line disposal of the water plants as an example, we dispose of the biosalves at the wastewater plant. If we don't follow regulations and there are spines imposed for that, we pay that. It's our responsibility to dispose of those biosalves properly. And if we were running the water plant and that wasn't disposed of properly, and that was part of our responsibility, we would pay the fines. It's very simple. The fines don't just stop with the NPDS permits. Also OSHA violations for safety. The last time OSHA came into town, they inspected four city departments. And I'm happy to report that the wastewater plant was the only department that didn't get a citation from OSHA because we take our safety very seriously. We've received two state awards for safety and one national award. And I think, I'm not going to put us up against Light and Power because their job really needs to be very much about safety, but I think we've got one of the best safety programs in the city. And certainly among wastewater plants, we have a very good safety program. We have complete staffing responsibility. It's been talked about here. United Water is going to have a certified operator up there. You guys don't have to worry about that. Licenses are becoming very hard to come by. Yes, I've been working, trying to get people to come into this industry. It's not glamorous. People don't want to do it. In fact, you're lucky to find people that even want to work. I don't want to work in the wastewater field. But anyway, since 2010, United Water became totally responsible for the staff at the wastewater plant when the city staff member retired up there. And since then, they started saving $15,000 a year because we can do it cheaper than what the city was looking for. Again, more savings to the city. This is a partnership. It's been very successful in a lot of ways. We also pay all of the other costs associated with the plant, and I mean all of them. It's not just wages. It's electricity. It's natural gas. It's the garbage bill. It's the toilet paper. It's lab supplies and safety supplies. It's office supplies, uniforms. You name it, we pay for it. The city doesn't pay for any of that. We process about 40 invoices from the plant a month. That's 40 invoices that the city treasurer knows it needs to deal with. Bring her up or saving her, saving the city extra expense, I don't know. Put it, label it any way you want. We also pay the payroll for our three employees. That's three employees the city payroll clerk doesn't need to deal with. Our bill is a monthly lump sum, which is guaranteed. That makes it very easy for the city to budget the amount of costs related to wastewater treatment at the beginning of the year because it is what it is. You add on a few other things that are going to happen with capital improvements and the city's portion of other things, and it becomes a very easy budget to do. I would guess Mark would say it's probably one of his easiest, if not the easiest, but I can't pull words into his mouth. But certainly easier than some, let's say that. It's worth noting that a fair amount of the lump sum flows back into the city. The biggest amount of that would be the electric bill. We pay the bill right back to the City of Lowell. And another big chunk flows back in the form of my wages. As Mr. Hall pointed out, I live in the city, and this is where my paycheck comes. It also flows back in other ways. We try to act locally as best we can, Renard's Hardware, Choco Automotive, and any other place that happens to sell what we need. Now granted, that doesn't happen all the time, and it certainly doesn't usually happen on a big ticket. I know it's because typically it's something very related to what we're doing up there. It's a specialty thing that we need to go out of town for. It's as simple as that. But what we can buy local, we do. Over the last 25 years, the lump sum, the basis of the lump sum, has only gone up 58%. If you look at the cost of living over that same time, it's gone up 92%. So we have tried, we have shared the cost savings with the city by keeping the rates down as best we can. Again, a successful partnership. United Water does periodic internal audits. That's how they stay on top of us. That's how we stay on top of our game. how we stay on top of our game. They come out and check me for anything related to compliance, contract compliance with the city, NPDS permit compliance, regulatory compliance with safety regulations, all of that. That's what you get when a contractor's running your facility. They need to make sure that I'm doing a good job, because that's how we stay in business. None of that is the city's responsibility, that's what we do. Brian alluded to the host of support staff that I have, technical staff. United Water has 2,300 employees, and they all have their various expertise, whether it's HR, whether it's safety regulations, whether it's biological questions, attorneys, accounting, customer service, we have research and development people, IT, you name it, security. Those are all available to me, they're phone call away, and we don't pass that cost on to you. That's for me to be able to do my job better, so this plant runs the way that it needs to. We carry all the insurance coverages for our people, and with workman's comp, it's general liability, it's automobile liability. That's also part of the cost that we have. In today's dollars, that plant is worth about $9 million, and I think you could argue that that's the city's most valuable asset. And we need to protect that, and that's what my job is all about. And to protect that, we use computerized maintenance management system, and we have the entire time I've been there, and I'm not sure any other city department uses that. And what that does for us, we've got 166 pieces of equipment in that computerized maintenance management system, and it spits out close to 2,000 work orders a year for us to be able to stay on top of those assets with regular oil changes and greasing and all of that to prolong the life of the equipment and keep costs down for the city as best we can. And we've done a very good job of that. We've run a very small percentage of corrective work orders up there, far below the industry standard for what you'd expect to find in any facility. We also have a computerized water information management system, which basically has everything to do with lab and the NPDS permit. It reminds us of what tests need to be done, on what days. It's a place for us to input the lab data to generate state reports. United Water rolled that out to all of the projects they operated a few years ago, and it was several thousand dollars for each program they bought. And that was done out of our pocket, not at the city's expense. Because it was important to us for our projects to be operating at that level. We're contract operators, we want to be smarter than the average bear, and the way we do that is by spending money to make sure we do the things right. In the community, United Water is involved in a lot of things. The Sizzlin Summer Concert Series, Riverwalk Festival, Chamber of Commerce, Lowell Rotary, Relay for Life, the fire department, the schools, et cetera, the list goes on, but that's enough. Now let me talk about our staff for a few seconds. And I'm sorry, but bear with me, I've got a lot of good things to say. I promise I will get done, and it won't be an hour. Our staff of three has a combined industry knowledge of 64 years, and plant knowledge of 47 years. A few meetings ago, I heard comments, a couple people were retiring, senior staff of the city, and I heard people saying about how they were losing the historical knowledge. Well, guess what? This summer, I'll have 26 years of historical knowledge at your plant. And I'm happy to do that. I'm very proud of that, as a matter of fact. If you talk to us very long, Brian's sitting over here, he's my partner up at the plant, and Sean is our part timer, Sean Gordon lives in Virginia Township. But if you talk to us very long, you hear us saying things like "my plant" or "our plant," because we have pride ownership. As far as we're concerned, that is our plant. And I don't think you find that much in today's workforce at all. And we have it right there. Cross-training, I heard discussions about cross-training. Brian and I are interchangeable when it comes to running that process. He's caught on very quickly, he understands how to operate that plant, we both know the adjustments that need to be done to keep that plant in compliance. And succession planning, he's it, folks. Keep me around, in a few years, he'll be standing here negotiating the next contract. He already has the B licenses required for the plant, and he's poised to take over from me when I retire. And it'll be a very smooth transition. Again, the city won't have to be going out looking for a licensed operator somewhere in a pool of licensed operators that are shrinking. It used to be completely different, as I mentioned earlier, but today, we have an excellent relationship with the regulatory community. In fact, we're held up as an example of what a plant should look like and how a plant should be run. The last district staff person that I got up in Grand Rapids, they sent her out to Lowell to see what a plant, learned what wastewater plant was about, because she came out of a completely different division, and to see what a plant should look like and how it should be run properly, before she went to the rest of the plants that she was going to be responsible for. I take a lot of pride in that, I think that says a lot for our operation. Her bosses sent her out here. It was cool. We also have an excellent relationship with industrial users, and that's key to having a successful industrial pretreatment program. Something else that we would be liable for, the wheels fell off from it, but it runs very well, because we work very closely with the industries, and everybody's been good with the relationship. Our plant was also featured in a national trade magazine because of the flood, and that was really cool, too. Just one more accolade from the city of Lowell, along with a long list of accomplishments that the city has. And there's no shortage of community involvement by our staff. Brian's on the Chamber of Commerce, I'm on the Rotary Club, and together, we volunteer to things like the prom, again, the Sizzlin Summer Concert Series, Riverwalk, Chamber of Commerce outings with the Rotary, Relay for Life, and Pink Arrow, et cetera. Now the last, I would like to talk about me. I have a Class A license, all that's required is a B. I've had an A the whole time I've been here. I came with an A, you have the best license in the state, highest one you can get. And I'm happy to be here at a big facility, that's just a little icing on the cake. Couple years ago, I received the Operations Professional Year Award from the MWEA, and I'm very proud of that. They only give out one a year, there's several thousand people working in the business in Michigan. And it's recognition for standing up and doing a great job and being recognized and being a part of the Michigan Water Environment Association and an active member. Trace and I moved here almost 26 years ago. Excuse me. We moved our family here to Lowell, and we've never regretted that decision. Our kids were raised here, and it's their hometown. It's not our hometown, but it's our home. This is where we plan to retire, unless something changes that in history. The entire time we've been here, our family has lived in the city. Most of that time, we've owned a home, we pay taxes, we pay user fees. There's only two other city staff members that can say the same thing, and one of them is going to retire in a couple months. Four out of five of our immediate family members live in the city, and three of them work in the city. Trace and I both belong to the Rotary Club. In addition to the Rotary Club, we contribute many hours of volunteer work around this community and elsewhere. Together, we've been on over 30 mission trips. We're both advisors to the middle school youth group at the Methodist Church. And twice, I've received the United Water Care Share Award for my involvement with that youth group. It got me a piece of plastic, which is really cool, I have it on display, but it got $1,500 every time for that youth group, just because of my involvement with them from United Water. This is what the company brings to the table. This is just a sampling of the things that happen when you have a contractor with you. This is the last page, and this is my summary. So what does the city get? The city gets a professional compliant, award-winning operation that preserves the city's assets. They get extra services beyond the day-to-day operation of the plant. They get a professionally-run operation that saves the city money and enhances city revenues. They get professional management that's been very diligent about cost containment, so that the increases have been far below the rate of inflation. Let me conclude with these slots. Please note, United Water is a profit company, there's no doubt about that, but earning a profit is not guaranteed. Any money we make is a result of managing the operation and maintenance, so that the expenses meet established budgets and targets. It's also the result of United Water being able to leverage our company's size in order to get preferred pricing on goods and services. The city would not get those prices, and they are significant. In fact, it blows me away how much other people pay for things that we buy at a much reduced rate. Sometimes we can share those savings with the city. For instance, if it's a maintenance cost, maintenance costs are fixed in our contract. So when I go to our vendor for maintenance supplies, and we automatically get a 10% discount that other people don't get, we can stretch your maintenance dollars that much further and share it that way with you. It doesn't save you any money, but it gives you more bang for your buck. If we fail to provide successful management or satisfactory services, it's possible that we wouldn't make any profit, or we could even lose money. And it really is that risk-reward penalty process that ensures the city in efficient operation with effective management, maintenance, maintenance, and operational services. United Water and I are very proud of what we've done here in the city, and we'd like to continue it in the future. And we very much enjoy being part of the Lowell community and have for almost 26 years. I hope you can see the value of partnering with United Water, and this staff, and me. We are part of this Lowell community, and as I said, it has been a very successful partnership. Your costs are not, the profit we're making is not absorbent, it's very fair. In fact, Gary Timmer, my boss, was here, we had dinner tonight, and we had a very frank conversation, that if you were going out for contract, chances are, the contract would go up, because quite honestly, we're not making the kind of money that a big corporation expects to make from a project. But we're happy to continue this relationship, because it's been a very good one for many years. So I thank you for your time, and if you have any questions, I would be happy to answer them.
My motion stands that we offer as a city manager to negotiate a new agreement with United Water.
That moves in seconded to extend the contract and give the city manager authorization to negotiate that. Yeah, but it's a roll call, please.
Yes.
Councilmember Hall?
Yes.
Councilmember Mayor?
Yes.
And Mayor Hedges?
Yes. Thank you. Mr. Hall, have your...
Thank you. And item A, sidewalk criteria.
I have before you the deficiency criteria for sidewalks and driveways. What's on the screen is just a little bit of reference. It's a PowerPoint that I did, some technical on sidewalks. I'm just going to look through two of the slides, I'm not going to look through the whole thing. But we talked about community benefits and responsibilities, and what's required under our code and under Michigan law, and sidewalk conditions evolve, and you start running sidewalks, and cracks begin, and nature grows, and cracks expand, and nature expands, and sidewalks fail, and nature wins. And so we developed a program where we would rate sidewalks into red, yellow, and green conditions. And red would be high danger and would require immediate replacement, yellow would be low danger, and that we would, it would have to be considered for replacement. And then green would be safer satisfactory, and no replacement would be required. And so that's what's before you, and I want to put these up here to have the pictures to assist in our discussion, but the deficiency, when we talk about differences in elevation, for red, we're talking about one inch or greater between squares. And this difference in elevation, we're going to talk about buckling in a minute, this difference in elevation is between the squares. And right now, the state law requires that, or actually, state law says that we may be liable for injuries that occur when somebody's walking on a sidewalk if the elevation is two inches or more. And so we're recommending to establish in our criteria that when it gets to one inch, we write homeowners a letter, and we say that you really need to take care of it, and that we require it. If there's an elevation difference less than an inch, then we would write a letter, but we would rate that as yellow, we'd write a letter saying, there is an issue, you may be required to fix this at some point in time, but we're not requiring it at this point in time. Going to buckling, and stop me in the middle of any of these, if you have any questions or comments on any of these specific criteria. On buckling, we talk about a grade difference of more than two inches, over five feet. So buckling is where two squares have buckled up, and if that elevation difference over the five feet of a square is two inches or more, then we would call it red. If it's less than two inches, but there's still some buckle, then we would call it yellow. Holes, holes are going to be, typically, it's not like somebody's gone and drilled a hole in a sidewalk, it's typically going to be where there's some cracking, and then a chunk of the sidewalk has actually come out. If it's two inches or greater in diameter, then we would call it red. If it's less than two inches or greater in diameter, then we would call it yellow. Multiple cracks, what we're looking for in multiple cracks are any elevation difference. In this case, in the example that you see here, the cracks may not lead to necessarily a red, but you can see where there's some holes in there, and those are holes that probably are greater than two inches in diameter. Or there may be some surface crumbling, and we'll talk about the surface crumbling on the next slide. But multiple cracks with any elevation difference would be red. If there are multiple cracks, if there's no elevation difference, then we would call it yellow. Surface crumbling, I guess I'm staying on the same slide and same picture, but if there were a lot of loose material as a result of the cracking, and if the loose material exceeded five square feet of the surface of the square, then we would call it red. If it were less than five square feet of the surface of the square, then we would call it yellow. And then residual material, it's typically weeds, typically weeds or grass or something growing. Usually, it starts at the edge, and then starts to grow across the middle, and if it's left undone, it ends up like you see in the picture. And we would say that red would be any residual material on the surface more than two inches from the edge of the sidewalk. Think about plowing, or think about shoveling the sidewalk, that we don't require the entire width of the sidewalk to be shovelled, it just has to be passable. I think that's what it says, Dan, or Steve, whoever knows that. So we're kind of thinking about that in terms of residual material as well, that okay, maybe it rolls over the edge, we don't want to require everybody to edge their sidewalks every single year, that at some point in time, as that growth starts to creep in toward the center and the sidewalk minerals, then we want to have people take care of that, take care of that residual material. So we're calling it more than two inches from the edge of the sidewalk. And that's it, that's the criteria. We, again, going back to workshops, we had talked about this in workshops, and there's still some other issues that we need to look at in terms of, you know, one ordinance that we have out there, and I think we need to bring that back for some discussion. And also, there's some old policies in place, and there's some new policies that need to be developed as we move forward with the sidewalk program. First up is really getting this criteria in place, so that as the snow falls, we can get somebody out, and do inspections, and use this criteria for those inspections. So these are our recommendations, and we would ask you to adopt this, or some version of it, if you want to change it.
Any questions?
The two inches diameter deep, we got two-inch hole in the main street, you know, like you said, lag holes.
Oh.
But I mean out, when we're out walking, you know, because they're not really in the path, but when you're out walking, is there going to be a depth on that, too? Because, you know, if you're walking with a heel, you know, because I'm thinking about a young lady.
Or a cane.
Yeah, or a cane. It's the depth, not, you know, not as much the, you know...
We hand in our old criteria a depth of three-quarters of an inch, I think, and then we can put a depth on it as well. And I don't see any problem with doing that.
You know what I mean, because you can handle the three, I think anybody could handle the three-quarters, but you go much more... the three-quarters, but you go much more than that when you're walking, and that's going to, I mean, I've seen some ladies just, just walking through a pot wall, you know, that, that fall down, and they fall down hard. That's...
And it could be a stone smaller than two inches that's actually come out of the concrete building, but it's, you know.
Left a hole.
An inch deep.
Yeah.
Yeah. And we could add that three-quarter inch deep as well to the holes, if that's what the council would like.
I think we should put it in there because it is about public safety. It isn't about the sidewalk. And the flagpole one, I just said that, but they're, everyone knows where they're at, so they're out by the edge of the street.
There really have to be some exceptions.
Yeah.
I saw a lot of mountain heads.
Anything else?
I will move that we adopt the 2015 deficiency criteria as modified for sidewalks and driveways.
And I will second it.
Councilmember Althaus?
Yes.
Councilmember Ellison?
Yes.
Councilmember Hall?
Yes.
Councilmember Mayor?
Yes.
And Mayor Hedges?
Yes. Thank you. Moving on to council comments. Mr. Mayor.
Best of my knowledge, there's nothing new to report from the fire authority. Chief Martin's outstate. I have some other comments, so I'd say a few words about the Merck and their decisions and orders. They are exactly that. They're orders given by three judges to two parties that cannot resolve waiver disputes on their own. Although not criminal or civil offenses, like Mr. White said, they are not suggestions either. The reporter has found the city to be guilty on at least six issues. Just because some people don't want to talk about them doesn't make them go away. Second, actions of the council are by a majority of the council. Each council member has an equal voice and has the right to be heard on any item that they deal deemed appropriate. If council members are actually interacting with the majority of the citizens, like they are leading you to believe, then I would ask you to look back at the minutes, the previous meetings, and find where the three vapid votes stand in relation to the consensus view of the actual majority. Finally, the council should be seriously questioning the ethics and morals of the city manager. It is obvious they should be questioned, and he, at the very least, should be reevaluated as to his ability to represent the city fairly. He has proven quite the opposite in the past three years. He has said he wants to build a team. He has shown he wants to dictate rather than manage. He has spoken to having a chain command, and I can tell you from my four years in the Navy, he has a very narrow perception of what a chain command really is. We need to start doing what the majority of citizens are asking us to do. And that's all I have for council comments.
Thanks, sir. Mr. Althaus?
I don't have any boards to report on, and I do want to let Mark Munt know that I think you guys are doing a great job. The only reason that, and I want to explain why I voted no on that, is because we do have a process in effect at the city that we are supposed to put things up for bid when there's so much money, and, and I just think that, that it should be, not just, and maybe we aren't paying you enough money, and maybe we should be paying you more, but the thing of it is, that's a, that's a way that we can have a little bit of checks and balances, and, but I know you guys are doing a great job because you are. So, and that's why I voted no. So, that's all I can say.
Followed by, I have nothing to report on the two committees that represent the planning commission and the FARA, and just to let the city council know that I will be attending a seminar in Lansing regarding a zoning board of appeals as we have a meeting coming up, I think, in April. I probably should be as ready as I can be, so I will be attending that weather permitting. Thank you very much.
Thank you. Mrs. Ellison?
I have nothing new to report on my boards or commissions either, and I just want to thank Mark Munt for his words. I think you were well spoken. It's nice to hear that. We need to be reminded that. We kind of take you for granted. It is a partnership, but I sleep well knowing that it's in good hands.
Thank you.
Thank you. Likewise, it's early in the month here, and so none of the boards that I serve on have met as yet or since we last met. And similarly, congratulations to our friends at United Water and all they've done over these 25, approaching 26 years. And Perry, I've got additional aid. So for Saturday night, please turn out for Laugh Fest at the Grand Volute at 7:00 PM. Any AM tickets are available at Spring Grove. So participate, support, and help this community be as great as it is. Thank you. And with that, manager, your report.
Thank you. We are moving forward with the idea of unscrewing the bulbs on every other light in the downtown district. This Lowell residency, emergency, visitors to provide input drew us on the concept of removing every other light fixture, and that was something that was suggested as part of downtown placemaking plan. So we're going to start getting the word out. It's up today, and we'll be doing our best to get the word out over the next couple of weeks, and get that scheduled, and get it done, and see what it looks like. And we'll be looking for comments from anybody, residents, visitors, anybody. Just, I'm not sure what you think. We worked on the, worked on the proposed budget, or the next fiscal year continues. I plan to have preliminary discussion on recommendations out here in March workshop. And then I'm sad to report that our candidate for DPW director was given some incentives to stay in his current community, and he's now declined the position. He was very apologetic. He was looking forward to coming tomorrow. In fact, he said he already had somebody looking at his house, and his current community made him an offer that he couldn't refuse, and so we're back to the drawing board and we can say, replace our retiring DPW director in the district. And then up on the screen, we have the cover for a note card. It's a city of Lowell, and it's a, it's a card that we'll be using for thank you notes and things like that. It's something that we wanted to play in place for a while. That drawing was drawn by Ivan Reynolds, and Ivan is a Lowell middle school student. And I want to say thank you to Teresa Munt, who works on the staff at City Hall and was able to make the connection with Ivan as I was talking about wanting to have a hand drawing of a city hall or something in the community on our note cards. And so she reached out to Ivan, and Ivan put this together for us. And first thank you note will be going to Ivan Reynolds for drawing the cover of our cards. So again, Ivan Reynolds, thank you very much for your work and for your assistance. And that is all I have for you.
Thank you. Moving on to appointments. We've got two vacancies yet, so consider that and put that.
I move that we adjourn at 8:19.
Hold on a second.
There's a second. Hold a second. All in favor?
Yes.
Thank you very much.